Commits meeting to order. We get an executive session. Does he like to read it off, Bob?
No, I'll make a motion that we convene an executive session, actually two of them. One pursuant to Section 405.6 F as a public fund, and the second pursuant to Section 405.6 C to discuss acquisition of property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion here or none? All those in favor?
In favor.
Go ahead. Somebody make a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion here or none? All those in favor? You in favor, Katie?
Raise my hand.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
What was the motion?
To approve the Philbrook 2021-8.
Okay.
And Bob made the motion. Colonel seconded it.
Okay.
Any more discussion here or none? All those in favor?
Embraced.
Okay. And I believe that's it. Recede until six o'clock. The call is meeting to order and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have no presentations. We have a public hearing for our liquor license for our Sammy's Family Entertainment Center.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second. Bob seconded it. Is there any discussion here or none? All those in favor?
I got my hand raised.
Okay. Putting the public hearing. Any public comments? I don't see anybody in the public.
I just want to let you know that the police department has no issues with the license.
Okay. Does the board have anything to say? Guess not. Somebody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Bob, you second? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Ann.
And somebody would, somebody like to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the Act on Liquor License for Sammy's Family Entertainment Center LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
And Bob? Any discussion here or none? All those in favor? It's all set. Cool. Any adjustments to the agenda?
It's not an adjustment. It's just a question during my comment section. I'd like to talk a little bit about pay as you throw, purely within the context of the budget. There is no ulterior voter here. But I would just like to say a few words about that.
Okay.
About what?
And I have absolutely, I assure you, absolutely no locks to grind in. The voters have spoken on that, and I understand. It's just a few, a few ideas I wanted to toss out.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Thanks.
Any citizens' comments? We don't have anybody in the audience. Is it for a reporter?
How about Ruben? Is he here?
Where's Ruben?
Is Ruben here?
Not in the chat.
Wow.
Whoa.
Girl, we're flying solo tonight.
Uh-oh.
Select Board comments. Bob.
Speak of the devil. It really is a result of a conversation I had recently with Julie about budget and our concern that during the next year, especially fiscal year 2022, that things could be very, very, very difficult. And I just got to thinking, you know, back in 2016, for totally different reasons, we made a presentation to the Select Board and put a warrant article together for pay as you throw. And at the time, we did a fairly comprehensive study. And the conclusion of the study, based on information we got from a number of different sources, was that the towns, the three towns, over a three-year period, would save more than a million dollars. Waldeboro's share of that would be about $65,000, $650,000 over three years. And the reason you save the money is you're shifting the responsibility for paying for what you throw away to the individual instead of to the taxpayer base. You, you buy a bag. You put your garbage in the bag. You decide how much to put in the bag. You buy as many bags as you want or as few many, as few, a number of bags as you want. But at the end of the day, you're paying the tip fee and the transport cost of getting your garbage up to Hampton, where it will be thrown away fairly soon, hopefully. That comes out of the budgets for all three towns. So it's a substantial reduction in budget expense. Each citizen continues to pay the cost of their own garbage. Now, this was turned down at the polls overwhelmingly. I think we lost something like four to one. So at the time, obviously, either we did a terrible job explaining it to people or there was just no appetite for that kind of change. And the thought occurred to me that maybe it's time to talk about this again, not to put a hammer on people and change the way we've been doing things just because it makes, in a sense, economic sense and recycling sense. But we have another factor involved in this, and that is a budgetary factor that the town is going to have to deal with. Cutting a million dollars out of the town's budgets, the three towns' budgets over a three-year period is a substantial chunk of money. And it reflects positively in the long term on the mill rate that we're required to assess to meet our costs. So I guess, and one of, I think one of the reasons it didn't pass was it, it didn't have the degree of public support that we thought it needed from the Select Board at the time and even from the town manager who wasn't in favor of it. So I'm tempted to ask the transfer station committee if they're willing to look at this again. I have no idea what Cushing and Friendship are going to say. They might just say, no, it's a dead end. We don't want to go there. On the other hand, they may, they may be facing the same kinds of issues that we're facing budgetarily and be willing to stick their necks out and say, let's try this again. But let's do a much better job of educating people about what it is and how it works. So I guess my question to you is, would you be amenable to the transfer station committee looking at this again? Or is it dead in the water from day one? I, that's, that's the question. The original proposal had provisions in there for helping folks who might not necessarily be able to afford the bags. So there was, there was a provision in there for that. There was a means test. They had to make so much income in order to qualify. But the only other objection I, I was aware of was that there was concern that people would throw their trash on the road instead of buying the bags to throw it away. That has happened in some communities during the initial phases of the, the operation, but it very quickly disappeared. And we have case studies to support that argument. So that's, that's just what I wanted to put out there and just ask you whether or not there's something.
Just a question. Are there any communities that are doing that now?
Hundreds of them in Maine, yes.
Okay, in Maine, all right.
And right here in, in mid-coast.
And about how much does a bag cost?
Well, at the time, there were different sizes.
Sure.
If I recall correctly, it was anywhere from 75 cents for a smallish bag on up to $2.50 for a pretty large bag. And yeah, I mean, you can stuff that bag with as much as you want to.
I think another thing too is when we had the presentation, the guy that did the presentation said more than likely our taxes wouldn't go down. I was sitting right there, and he said that. So why would you want to, if the taxes are not going to go down, why do you want to do pay as you throw?
I guess the response to that, but it is a good question. The response to that is you're decreasing the rate of increase or you're holding the rate of increase at bay. And in this day and age, that's not a bad thing. Yeah, I mean, that's a, that is a valid question.
I mean, as soon as they hear that your taxes aren't going to go down, even though now you're going to be paying, you know, twice
Right.
for the same thing.
Yep.
You're paying for the transfer station and get rid of your trash.
And I think that's where we fell down, not anticipating that question and answering it appropriately.
An increase in recyclables, though.
You would, in every town, your recycling's increased.
Possible.
Without exception. Recycling goes up. So the amount you're trucking goes down.
Yeah, we don't have it here, but yet recycling has gone up in ours, in our town tremendously, from like, what, 200 ton to 500 ton?
When we got into New Ordinance, you're right. But since the New Ordinance come on, it's, it's kind of leveled off, and it's still pretty low, around 18 to 20%. I mean, the goal is 50%. So, I mean, we have a ways to go.
That's an incentive, though, to recycle. Are you going to pay to put in the bag or will I recycle this for free?
That's right.
And I know that was, that, I, I remember that part as being a real plus.
Yep. So I, I just kind of, I'm a little gun shy. And I understand people's problems with the idea of even putting it on the table. But it's, it's a different year this year. And we are facing issues that we no one dreamed that we'd be facing two, three years ago. So.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Colonel?
No, I don't have anything for the.
Jan?
Oh, well, you know, just, Bob, just to make a comment on that. I don't think it's ever wrong to revisit something like that if the, I found it really interesting and I, I thought it was a, a good thing. Not that I like to pay any extra in anything, but I thought in the big picture of things, it was, it fell in the plus side, the good side. So I didn't, you know, I would think, ask them and see what they think. Who knows? Who knows? But it is, again, it's, it's public education that,
Yep.
you know, that's, that's the important part. Well, I would just like to say, and I mentioned to Julie when I was talking to her, it's such a treat to see our town all over the newspaper. And so I would like to, and I did. And it was so nice on the front page, on the inside, on our page.
Derek Booker!
And it, well, you know, and the, the vaccine and the this and the that.
Nikki, Nikki arms up there.
It's really nice to see positive things being spread all over Lincoln County about Waldeboro. There are lots of positive things. And I, I would like to thank you for doing that. And for Christine, is she the one from Christine Simmons?
Christine Simmons. Yeah. From the Courier.
Yeah, yeah. She's not here to thank, but if you're listening, Christine, thank you. I really appreciate that, and thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for having some interesting things to photograph and talk about.
Well, pictures really do, do the trick. You know, people read pictures more than they read words.
Yes, they do.
So, thank you.
Cool. Move along. Town manager just report.
I have a couple of things. We received.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Can I stop you right there?
Yes.
I forgot Katie. Katie, you got anything to say?
I'm just drying my eyes because you cry. I'm crying because you forgot me.
I did not forget you. I did not forget you.
I'm all that. Thank you very much for asking. I'm all that.
We received an email today from Peter Robbins. Well, it was a couple of days ago, but I replied to him today. He is interested in sitting on a committee that will deal with the Sester Centennial, which is 250 years in 2023. So if we're going to have a committee, he would like to be on that. But it was a great reminder that, hey, that's on there. We might want to add that on to our goal list tonight. The governor's budget came out on Friday. Preliminary information that we got from the MMA is that they are going to fund revenue sharing, hopefully at the same level as last year or potentially more. So that's, that was good news.
Okay, yep.
That was good news. Again, it's all up in the air.
Yeah.
But we should, as more time goes on, we should have a better grip on that. And department heads have been turning in their budgets. I think everyone but one is in, and it's our usual late arrival. Public works. The other interesting thing is we've been trained through the COVID funding. We were able to get Code Red. And Code Red is a system that will allow me to, and other department heads, to communicate directly to the residents. They can either sign up for this. They will be able to sign up for this by the end of the week. And what we'll do is in, in the event of emergency, we can send you emails and text messages. So it's a really cool system. So say if we wanted to close a portion of a road and it was going to be closed for a couple of hours, we could draw a circle and notify everybody in that area that, hey, the road is closed. Seek an alternate route. If snowstorms are coming, we can give people an update. And there's also one where it's a non-emergency so that if you wanted to know, oh, Waldeboro Day is this weekend, we can send things to you. It's not new technology. It's just different for us to have it ourselves. And specifically too, when the COVID vaccines are out, we can tell people where the COVID vaccines are and lots of things like that. But that's very important. That's actually extremely, as we roll that stuff out, as the vaccines get closer to being able to be put into everybody's arm, that's something that will definitely let people know about.
Where do you sign up for that?
It'll be on the website.
Okay.
And then you just click on and it takes you right there. You fill out all your information. The only thing I'm having trouble with is the ERSI map. Have you ever heard of that? I think it's.
Yep.
Yes. Has some weird, we, we put Paul's address in and Ridge was spelled RDG, an abbreviation. So unless you knew that was how the street was abbreviated, West RDG for Ridge, it wouldn't show. So there is a couple of little things like that we have to work through, but we're doing that. And last but not least, I just wanted to say a big thank you. Our community is amazing. We had a tragic accident in Waldeboro where a family lost their father in a very, very tragic accident. And the outpouring of generosity that our community exhibited to this family was unbelievable. And our fire department, Chief Smeltzer and everybody band together. They did some fundraisers, some food drives for this family. And it was unbelievable, just the amount of people who were so willing to donate their, their money and their time to help this family. And I just want to say that it speaks so highly of the heart of Waldeboro. And with everything going on in the world, it just proves how wonderful people are. And that's all I have.
Okay. Consent calendar. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Ann.
Okay. New business. Discuss the community forum. I would believe that would be you.
That's me. So we were going to do a community forum last year. If you recall, back in April, we had a date scheduled. Obviously, it didn't happen. But what I'd like to do is move ahead with plans for another community forum in May on a Wednesday. And I, I don't know where we'll be with COVID then, so I would assume to plan it as a Zoom meeting. But given the fact that I've been now on a couple of these Zooms with about 50 to 60 people, it can be done. And, and you can even break people down into smaller groups. So I'd like to set a tentative date either on May 12th or May 19th. And one of the things I would like to do is by then, I think the recreation committee will have met to talk about plans, potential plans or, or based on what the voters approved, what a community center may look like. So I think we'll have a lot to talk about by then. Also, I think it's really important that all the people that were invited before, and I, I thought about this as I was thinking about the forum, is I'd like to let everybody involved, that was involved in the forum, know that we now have a community navigator in place. Because that was something that
A result of.
was a result of that, and that's, that's great. So, and I, I would like Karen Ann to really take front and center, at least on some of those pieces. Because I, I still think that we're still going to be talking about the big five, poverty, housing, transportation, you know, those types of things. So I think there's a natural, we can start breaking down these topics and, and putting the right people together in the groups when we start to have the forum. That was the only thing after the last forum that I got feedback on that I would say was, was constructive feedback as far as they would have liked to have had the housing experts talking about how, in the housing group versus sometimes when we put the questions out to groups the second time, their expertise wasn't necessarily in that. So we'll try to do that a little bit differently this time. But I think Karen Ann can really, especially for a, a lot of what she deals with and those topics, she can have that in a separate group or several groups to attack each topic. But if that's okay with you guys, I'd like to, to do it by Zoom. And then we can, if people are able to gather, we could still have a small group gather.
Thank you for choosing the Wednesday. That's my day off.
Well, that's when we always, we, they were always on Wednesdays.
I'm, I'm thankful that it's Wednesday.
Oh, go ahead. So that's where we are with that. So I will start planning that. And I will send out an update this week to everybody who attended just to let them know about Karen Ann. And she is busy, just so you know. She's back in the swing and two families on Monday. I'm sorry, on Thursday, and I don't know how many yesterday. So we're filling her time.
Cool. Cool. So update, so select board and town manager goals?
Do you remember this? Do you remember when it used to be four pages? So the ones in the pink were added. These were added over a year ago. So those were the last time you saw these. These were new. And I'm very proud to say that of what we added, three of them are completed. So we completed the main water negotiations rate increase. We completed the contract negotiations for the town manager. And we completed updating the EMS agreements. So I just want to end. One of the things I wanted to share with you too is the Marine Park Road has been included in the budget, and that technically is completed and can be removed.
Which number was that, Julie?
12.
12.
12 can actually be removed because it is completed.
So Marine Park, that road has been done?
Paved.
Oh.
With this hall.
Take a ride.
Yep. And the 2014 Amendment to the Coastal Zoning Act is completed. And the packet for new businesses in town was completed.
Yeah, well, these streetlights are pretty much done.
Mm-hmm. What, my number is that, Bob?
22.
Yep. Computer buys boat registration is done. And I also wanted to update you too. I should update you on this. The Davis Fish Fund and the Alwives, they got some recent news that was very good lately that it looks like they will have a resolution to the one piece of property that was, where they were having some difficulty gaining access to. Looks like that they're going to get some help from the state, and it's just going to get done. So that's, that's something.
The other thing you've done is the capital budgets for the departments. I mean, that, I mean, we look at that every year, but when we started this, we didn't have a capital replacement.
What town is that? What town?
That was number 16.
Waldeboro.
Well, I do think it's ongoing, though.
Yep, it is.
Yeah. Katie, the Route 1 and 32 intersection that drives you crazy, does it still drive you crazy?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And now it's, it's moved up on top of the hill to Moody's. I sat at that intersection and saw three cars go through a red light.
Okay.
And they were all on Route 1 headed north.
Sorry about that, Katie.
Is that you? Were you one of them?
No, not one. Maybe all three. We're going to get that Prius going fast enough to make it up the hill.
The only thing, just because it's on here. We did get a call from Caitlin Plachowski today about Waldeboro Day, whether she should plan or not. Marcus and I had a brief discussion about it. It's really up to what the gathering limits are then. We can't really predict that. You know, I'd like to say, yes, we're going to have it, but the reality is, we don't know.
Can they have meetings and just prepare for it just in case?
Well, my suggestion was, and they may not like this, but perhaps we should plan for it, but plan for it in the fall.
That's what I was thinking.
We could combine it with Oktoberfest.
Yeah.
And maybe that's something that could be chatted about.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. I was thinking maybe the fall we might be.
Yeah. Because it, I mean, we really, I, I, you know, you don't want to plan everything and then have to move everything. But I, I just think that that would be a safer bet in the fall versus the spring.
It would. And that's a good idea to combine it with Oktoberfest to.
It's, you know.
Because Waldeboro is German. It just makes sense to me. We add that German element.
Okay. Do we have more to add, everyone? Yes, I know truck pulls are still on there, Abden.
If we don't have a Waldeboro Day until then.
I brought this up, I think, you know, talking about goals. And one of the things I was thinking about in, in addition to this, maybe, I was thinking of more of an overarching idea. And I, I did write something to Julie, and maybe you saw it. But she was going to add world peace to her, her list of goals. And, and I encourage that, that she should add world peace to that because,
World peace.
you know, I mean, we all play a little role in that. So I was thinking of overarching types of goals like a yearly focus with objectives directed under whatever we choose. That not to be placed in these goals, but more as a highlight or a focus. Marketing a goal, so to speak. You know, just pick one and, and work on that. And some examples I thought of, and I was hoping other people would think of some examples, would be, that these were just off the top of my head. Beautification of Waldeboro or some clever slogan about that. And that would include, you know, maintenance issues as well as town gardens, window boxes, et cetera. Like cleaning up the garbage that's right in front of Hannaford. You know, when you come out of there, there's always litter there. Doing something, doing the little things, you know, that could be having some cleanup things or, or special colors for window boxes or plantings around town. Or another idea might be two-way communication, or again, a better slogan, that would include back and forth communication between businesses and the Select Board or the town office, residents, and the same, mid-coast, just to have more communication. Another would be something that says who we are. Once we determine who we are, of course, which could be something like a giving town, collaborative town. I know Nobleboro many years ago, and it was a school activity. And they came to come up with a slogan for their town. And they came up with the little town with the big heart. And it was really so descriptive of, of Nobleboro. And then there were lots of the people, the kids wrote things, you know. And they, they were able to think of what, what kinds of things happen in Nobleboro that we would consider big-hearted. And so it was, that was a really good, that, that was just their slogan, who they were. Oh, and some ideas that were coming up on that day, a giving town, a collaborative town, a diverse town honoring how we contribute to the whole or honoring and highlighting our differences and similarities. But any, any kind of idea that's just, just like a yearly focus, to focus on something that yearly focus, to focus on something that, something that's simple enough so that people see it, you know, that it can be seen, and it shows that we are, we are a community doing something.
I have an idea.
Yeah?
Seeing how we're, we have the, a big beautiful river with all those clambers down there, have a clam day or something like that. Something to let people know that, that is a, a big river that is keeping people, you know, in, you know, employed.
It's a big part of our town. And one year, Karen Clark wanted to do, and it's through the Business Association, I think, but she was thinking of, she wanted all the businesses to have their own clam hod. You know how some places have a, oh, Rockland has a lobster. Some places have Adirondack, Adirondack chairs that each business will decorate and put out front. She, she was trying to get somebody to build large clam hods, and then each business or group of people, whatever, would display that in front of their business, and would decorate it the way they'd like, or paint it however they would like it, to show that clamming is, is an important industry in.
They did that buoy tree down in Franchip, and that was really cool.
Oh, that buoy tree.
I was thinking we should do a clam hod tree.
Well, yes, yes.
It could be done.
It could be done, sure. But depending on whatever we, you know, just a focus that we could all work on, and it would pull the community in also.
Good idea.
So, I don't know what other people.
Clam festivals good, too.
Yep. Have to talk to Yarmouth about that. I don't know why they.
Don't know either.
I know. And then we'd let them have our big clam hod. It used to sit out front, you know, the monster clam hod. Where is that?
Town garage.
Oh. Mm-hmm. Well, something that could be pulled out, you know, if you want to choose clamming.
I think it's past its prime now. It's been around for quite a while.
Yeah. Well, so have we. Still kicking. I don't know. So, what do you guys think?
I like those ideas. It's just a matter of finding the impetus, and those who are interested in making it work. It's a people thing.
Yep. And some of those would not require large gatherings, you know, it could be things that a person could do at home, or with a family, or, you know, everybody plants flowers. So, you know, maybe choosing a color, or I would think one year, in the pink, you know, Waldeboro's in the pink. Or, or, or the clam thing, and then we could just brainstorm ideas of what people could do, and try and get a couple of people interested.
I mean, I know, I know Justin's been doing really good with like the Clean Roads initiatives.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, he's been trying, and he's been putting that in with the Shellfish Committee, with the Shoreland Cleanups.
He's done a good job, yeah. There's a town in, I think it was Wales, that their motto, I saw it on a presentation once, it said, whatever the name of the town, and it said, "We are a tidy town." And I just, I just really liked that. It was just a.
It's like being tidy.
Yeah. "We are a tidy town."
Did anybody else have goals they wanted to add? Anything you'd like to see done?
Yeah, I'd love to see what A.G. Gray's going to take care of. I'd love to see the Sullivan thinking.
Yeah. I'll add those.
Finalized.
Well, I think A.G. Gray was on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if A.G. Gray was on that list already.
Yeah, it is.
I'd like to see it in the completed.
I'd like to add the community center on there.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
And Medical Arts Building?
I think it's already on there, isn't it?
That's it?
Lincoln Health. Oh, that's, that's the forum, sorry.
Yeah.
I saw Lincoln Health. I didn't read the whole thing. Okay.
What would your focus on the forum be? Would there be a focus?
I'm going to ask Karen to work with me on that. I think, I think her input would be, would be good at this time. I, I think we have to narrow it. We have, we know, we've, we've listed in order of importance what they are. I think we just have to tick off, we'll deal with these four at this forum.
Well, it's really nice.
Or even three.
It's nice to be able to, if we have something in the forum that we can see on here next year that says completed.
Yes.
Like the community navigator.
Mm-hmm. No, it's. Our lists are getting smaller in a way, which is good. But then we just need to make sure we keep replenishing. As we're taking off, we put on.
I mean, we've done a lot of things, and that's, that wasn't even put on this list.
Well, that's the other, and, and I have to say, 2020 was a terrible year. And I'll even say this, as I was doing my eval, 2020 was a terrible year in that there wasn't a lot of strategic planning going on. It was reaction to what was going on. And that's, that takes away from some of those other things. And when you look at from March to July, we were in true COVID mode, where we were calling people, we were running the, the food, weekly food pantry. There was just so much going on. And then you, you go through the summer, where we were appointment only. I mean, there's just so much going on, and we accomplished so much. And, you know, it said on here, the, the boat registrations, online boat registrations. Well, we do everything online now. We are doing vehicle registration online, well, re-reg. Everything can be done online now. And we are investigating, taking, just so you know, credit card payments at the dump, at the transfer station.
Getting a machine up there.
Getting a machine up there.
Yes.
Wow. When are we getting our TV? You mentioned it, but I can't remember.
I need to get some bolts that can be used for the TV stand back here. We have all the equipment.
Uh-huh.
And we've got the last, I believe we got the last few checks, so we're fully reimbursed now for all the purchases. But I just need to get a bolt up there.
Is there anything weak? Is there a role the town can play in terms of the vaccination program that we haven't seen and put together yet? I'm sure partly because we don't have a lot of vaccinations lying around. I mean, I know we've done our EMS.
That's all. 52. We've had, we've gotten 52. That's what we've got.
And some doctors have been vaccinated. Those closely related to hospitals are done, but those who are not have, I don't have.
Richard has, Richard and Derek, they'll be doing the second shots now, coming up. And then after that, there is a plan that they're working on, main EMS, and Richard's part of that whole group about how potentially to distribute. So, as he gets more information, we'll get more information. But I think that's something that they are interested in helping distribute.
Is it, is it a focus on counties, or is it a focus on towns, or is it a focus on other?
There, it's, it's more about, right now, it's, it's your tiers. One, I think, 1A, 1B.
We're in 1A right now.
Yeah, we're in 1A right now.
And according to Dr. Schau, is getting the vaccinations to hospitals where they can be distributed.
And then the other issue becomes, we didn't get as many as.
Yep.
From the federal government.
My brother lives in Arizona. He made an appointment to go down to Cardinal Stadium on January 30 to get vaccinated.
Right.
I mean, they are that organized. It's amazing.
But they are a much larger, that's part of the issue, I think, too, is.
I think it is.
Is that they're getting, we haven't gotten the allotment that we were supposed to get.
Yep.
I think he said they have, only 30% hasn't been distributed yet in Maine, I think it was.
And I'm not being critical. I mean, I think we're ahead of the, we're ahead of the curve when he compares us to a lot of other places.
Right.
Yes.
It's just that it'd be nice to see some organization as it evolves. That's all.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, everything went beautifully on Friday here. So, what we've been responsible for has been good, and, and I think that gave them the feeling that there's more they could do if called upon to do. We have been getting a lot of questions about when it would be available, and we've sent them to the proper channels to find out. But we've had a couple of interesting, you know, would I qualify for a shot through, if I was, if I volunteered, would I get a shot quicker? Or, and we're like, well, no. We don't, we don't do that. Next. Any other goals?
As I say, has anybody else got anything to put on the goals or discuss? Hearing none. I guess we'll move along to the EMS policy approval.
And this just is really, this was put together by Derek, and as you know, he is our new deputy director of EMS. And one of his first tasks is to be going through all the policies. So, as he goes through them, or there's a new policy, you'll be seeing these more often from him. And a lot of this format for this comes from main EMS. So, it's for you guys to, you know, review and approve. It requires your approval.
The only comment I have, and you know where I come from on this, there are a lot of shoulds in this document. Should means ought to, but not necessarily will. And if that's the intent of the policy.
That was the intent.
To leave it loosey-goosey like that, then I'm fine with it.
I believe that that, in particular here, they would like some room for interpretation.
Well, I think that covered it. I mean, they've.
I, like I said, some of it is modeled towards us, but it, it comes from above. It gets passed down. And, and that's part of what main EMS, they, they put out policies and suggestions, and we take them. But that's part of what Derek's been doing, so you will be seeing these probably for the next couple of months. Not the same one, but different ones.
He's pretty clear. It's a moving target, because as they learn more, they.
And that's.
The way they do things.
Correct.
It allows for that.
Correct. And this is for the pandemic response policy.
And he wants an approval for this.
Right. Because technically, all their policies that they adopt, that they, they, they use over there should be adopted by the select board. So, that's why we want to put them.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Did you hear, Katie?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This was just handed out tonight, or did we have this before?
No, it was in our packet, I believe.
It was in our packet.
It was in our packet.
Tonight.
I haven't had a chance to really study it.
That's what I'm.
Yeah, we can do it at the next meeting.
Could we vote on it next meeting, and then we can go through this?
Yep. I trust Derek, but I'd like to be able to read.
Would somebody like to make a motion to table it then?
I'll withdraw my motion and we'll table it.
I'll take away mine.
Tanya did not get it until after she'd already sent you your packets. There needed to be a few revisions. Peg went through it, and there was a couple of typos.
Okay. There's a motion on the table to table it till the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Did, did you undo the first one?
Yes, Bob did.
We did.
Bob did.
Okay.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to table it?
And?
Okay. We will table it till the next meeting. So, that'll go on the agenda for the next meeting. There's no old business, so that's at the top of the list of items to take care of. Is there any, does anybody have any items to go on the meeting for the next? The evaluation of the town manager.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping we'll have heard something back from Volunteers of America, and something regarding that property acquisition issue that we've been talking about.
Can we, at some point, you mentioned the evaluation. At some point, we haven't really had a, now that we've gone through it and done it, can we do a workshop, because we, so that we can fine tune and see what, what works, what we think? So, we really haven't had a chance to.
Do you want a workshop at the next meeting?
That would be nice.
Adopt it or something? Yeah.
At 5?
Peg is kind of collating all the responses.
Yes. Yep. Yep.
So, we'll have that to look at.
Yep.
So, at 5?
Yep.
Do you want a workshop or an executive? Well, I'm assuming, are you going to be talking about the?
It can be a workshop.
Well, if we're talking a personnel issue, it really ought to be an executive.
Well, are you talking about the?
I was talking about the form, how we should, since we've used it, now we know how to tweak it, not the content of what we put on it, but just the actual form and.
The process.
Yeah, and the process for that. And that would not be.
No, you're right.
So, do you want to do, like, how long do you think that would take? A half an hour or an hour?
It could take, depending, it could take a while.
Okay. So, we'll do the workshop at the next meeting at 5, and then we'll do my actual review of it at a, at another meeting.
I'm busy with anything.
And during the workshop, we can talk about how, what the normal process is, once it's all been together and collated, and how it's presented to the town.
So, we'll move me until February. Okay.
I guess you got a stamp for the next agenda?
I do.
There's something else that's going to happen then, too, and I don't remember what it is.
Mr. Vale, you showed up late. Do you have anything to say? Brad?
No, I was just trying to make a point to come, and got here a little late. I, I would say, maybe I read it wrong, but it seems like there's a place on the website that gives the impression that people aren't, that it's, you don't have people in person. And so, I emailed Max, because it said, there's one place, and I may have read it wrong, but it looked to me like it said, meetings are not, are only in either call-in or Zoom or something.
I think that's for the upcoming planning board.
Okay. Well, that's probably where I'm missing.
Well, that's because we're expecting a lot of people, and we have to have a limit.
Gotcha.
Yeah. You want to stay afterward, just, if you can show me where you saw it on the website, it would help.
Yep. Is that it?
Yes.
So, what do we have? We have EMS.
I know you got here late, so I just make sure if you want to say something.
And if we have any resolution to our property acquisition.
Yeah.
Are we all set?
Yeah.
Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hand up.
And?
Okay, cool.
You, you, you get the prize out now. I mean, look at the time.